I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and ask Reverend Ted Stackfold if you come to our invocation today.
Would you bow your heads with me? Dear Heavenly Father, today I lift up the leaders in this room and across our school system that have been given the responsibility to educate, protect, direct, guide, and graduate the children that are just entering into school today and the students that are becoming adults tomorrow. Lord, I believe that these leaders are not here to further their career but to answer your call. Lord, I believe that today is not about an agenda but about people who are advocating. And I pray that the outcome of today's business will first be pleasing to you, second, give our students the best opportunity to succeed, third, bring unity to all those involved. Lord, would you guide the conversation, unite the vision, and give peace to all that participate? In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated.
Thank you.
Due to the absence of our chairman today, Jane Crawford, and I don't believe she has called in, is that correct? Next order of business is to elect a chair pro tem for today's meeting only. So this time I'll entertain nominations to do so from the-
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Kathy Jorgensen to serve as chair in the absence of Chairwoman Crawford.
Second.
Okay, motion made second to nominate Kathy. Any discussion on that at all? Okay, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and we'll pass the gavel to-
Motion and the gavel pass. Okay. Excuse me. Under Presentations, we have Laura France with Community Field Trips. This is a good one. I saw this, I thought, oh, that'll be good.
Good afternoon, board. How are you doing?
Good. How are you? Good. I'm doing fine.
You can see we have a really full audience today. And most of the people here are people who supported our school community this last week as helpers or organizers for the two field trips that our students took. Second grade students came to the Bartram Frolic all week long, and fourth grade students came to the Civil War occupation at the Bronson Mahaland House. And so what I'd like to do is I'm going to ask for Emily from the, Emily, oh, I can't find her name. Sorry. The floor, that's right. I was saying it's got a floor with an E. I know it, I've seen it on my computer all day. So Emily from the St. John's River Keeper. And if I could please also get Elizabeth Van Rensburg from the Historical Society. These are two of the main people who can talk to us through regarding what happened. But there are a lot of people in the audience today. And so I'm going to name some names of people that I know are here and that I'm probably going to leave people out, but I want everyone to understand how many people supported working with our children selflessly this whole last week. So from the Bartram Committee was, I think, I know I have Sam Carr and Ken and Janice Mahaffney. So thank you, Sam, Ken, and Janice. From the St. John's River Keeper, we have Emily and Mackenzie Edwards. Thank you. From Palaca Daily News, we have Mary K. Wells. And from the City of Palaca, Mandy Tucker, Jonathan Griffin, and Betsy Driggers was going to come today. I'm not sure that they're, okay. And, yeah, Mandy is here, I see her. From the Ruben Garden State Park, Ray Presley. From the St. John's River Center, Shan Purington, Mike Purington, Jan Hafner, Linda Kreider, and Earl Wallace. And these people, along with Jennifer Mitchell and Deidra Irwin from St. John's River Water Management District, everybody worked really hard to provide these experiences for our kids.
Wonderful.
So to just kind of give you, not only did they work hard, our instructional technology coaches worked as well. We met this summer with Shan Purington and Helen Muir. We worked this summer. And we talked about when the students come, because they've done this for the last couple of years, for the occupation of Palaca and for the Bartram Trail, they came last year. And we talked about how do you get kids to know a little bit about what they're coming to see so they have some background knowledge. And I want to let you know that our instructional technology coaches created in our Canvas learning management system, they created a little course that they sent out to the teachers who were coming so that the students could participate in some learning prior to coming this year. And I think that, I heard some people say that that was really helpful so that they knew that kids had gotten some previous learning before coming. So I want to say that we worked together with our community using our LMS platform of Canvas to help support teachers in the instruction prior to coming. So this was a really great starting point, and I believe we're going to work on doing some of this with the water, help me, Water Works?
Water Works.
Yep. So we're going to look at trying to do a couple more of these kind of cases where we've created something and we give it to the teachers prior to making a field trip in our community so that we get the biggest bang for the buck when the kids are on the move.
We do have a lot of history here.
There is. And I will say, I left the occupation of Palaca and I had three separate groups talk to me about the E.H. Miller students who had come to the occupation of Palaca and that they had been the best behaved and had the most interesting questions. And so I had to make a personal drive out to those students to tell them, three separate people at three separate times commented on their behavior. Yeah. So it's fun also to praise our kids. So if Emily could come up and Elizabeth, there's a bunch of slides that I'm just going to go through and they're going to kind of talk through so that you get an opportunity to see all the things that the kids did.
Great.
Yeah, the mic? Yeah, please.
All right, well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for inviting me to this board meeting to present the Bartram Frolic. We had a great time last week. It was hot. We drank a lot of water. But we had over 500 students come to the River Center. And so in those pictures, you'll see the bus unloading the students. We did close off the street to ensure the safety of the students crossing the street from going to the River Center to the waterfront, which is where most of the activities were happening. The picture on the upper right is all of us. We somehow were able to all get together and take a photo of everybody. And then we also had some great drone action, which is that great aerial shot. We had nine partners show up, and so one of them was the Florida State Parks with Ray Presley. He came with his fire truck and he was, all the kids got to shoot off the fire hose, which was really cool. And the point of having the Florida State Parks there was to talk about controlled burns. And of course, we matched everything to the state standards and state curriculums. And so the students were learning about the importance of controlled burnings, also understanding that people, professionals, are the only ones that should be doing controlled burns. Fire safety was a big portion of that. But the importance of having controlled burns for the habitat to regenerate and to allow certain species to be able to thrive and to be able to get the sunlight down to the forest floor. The City of Palaca, along with St. John's River Keeper partnered together to get every kid out on the water. And I really appreciate the school board of approving that. I know that water activities are a little scary at times, and so we did have some students that did not have their permission slips come. And let me tell you, they're going to be, they were devastated because they just, they wanted to be on that water with all their friends. It was cool. We got to see some wildlife. We went by an empty osprey nest. We talked about migration patterns of animals. We saw some, we talked about some things along the waterfront that you can see in Palaca such as Puck Puggie Park. There's also a fish sculpture. So we talked about camouflage and adaptations a little bit because it's kind of hard to see. And at the very end, Mackenzie, who was running the boat trips, she got all the kids to scream at the very end of the trip saying, "I love the St. John's River." And so it was really fun. They had a great time, and it really encouraged all the other students to really be enthused about it because it is a little scary to be on the water. I can appreciate that, especially if you've never been on there. And we asked that question as well, how many of you had never been on the water? And most of them raised their hands. And so this was a really unique opportunity for them. So thank you for approving that. The St. John's River Center, we did utilize that awesome space. And so they learned about wetland ecosystems. So the students were separated. There was one class in there at a time, and they were split into three rotating stations of a couple of minutes. And the River Center volunteers really stepped up to the plate to make that as engaging and exciting as possible and getting the most out of it. There's pictures of them standing in the canoe, rowing themselves away. They learned about the history of Palaca through these true and false actions. And then they had that central wetland exhibit. So they learned, they tried to find some of the animals that were exhibited in there, talked about the importance of cypress trees and cypress knees, so a little bit of the ecosystem in the area. We also had some living historians. These guys are awesome. They are some of the best educators I have ever worked with. We have one here today, Mike Adams. He was our Billy Bartram. Yeah. He, yes, he does look completely different. He's in the upper right corner of that picture. I know it's a little hard to see because it's such a small screen. But he was on his, literally on his hands and knees, talking about him crawling into a gopher toward his hole and scaring the bejesus out of those kids every time he screamed. So then in the bottom right, we have Jim Sawgrass. He was our Long Warrior. He taught some of the kids some Native American words as well. And then we had Job Wiggins, which is a traitor. And so the reason why we had all three of these is, of course, the Frolic was brought together because of William Bartram's story. He is one of Florida's first naturalists. And so he really is what tied the history and ecology of this area together and bringing about the environmental groups and the historians. And so, yeah, so the pictures, I guess, continue because I'm not flipping through mine. Oh, it's fine. No, you can go back one. Thank you. So the Long Warrior, he is the chief of the Seminoles, and so he was a friend of Billy Bartram. Job Wiggins was his guide and friend as well. And then, of course, Billy was here as well, and he's so good. All right. Florida, the FWC was also there. She brought fish skins. She brought scales. She brought jaws of sharks. And so she talked about many different kinds of animals that live in the river and the adaptations of them. So if they have scales or if they have more of a mucousy outer coating of where they live, where's the position of their mouth, which way is it facing? What does that tell you about what it eats, what level of the water column it lives in? And so she did a fantastic job introducing the animals that live inside the river to the students and getting them hands-on because sometimes we would see fish jumping, but she really brought the fish to the students to be able to handle. GTM was there. They actually brought animals, which was exciting until you had a parent fearful of snakes who had to be escorted out of the building. Which did happen once, only once. But they did bring some of their animals. They had turtles, they had snakes, they had a horseshoe crab. And so they were able to bring some things from the beach area, things that are a little bit more brackish living. So you can see the comparison between freshwater organisms, brackish water organisms, and saltwater organisms. And so they were really able to get hands-on with the animals. And some of the evaluations from the teachers were like, some of these kids have never seen some of these animals before. We talk about them in the classroom, but to actually visually see them live and hold them was a huge plus for the students. And of course, you get hands-on with animals, you're more likely to remember the experience, of course. And then we had Putnam County School District. I really appreciate everyone that showed up from the school district to show their support. The sheriff's office also showed up with their drone. So hopefully, we get some pretty cool drone action. They followed the boat around a little bit. It's a little windy, so hopefully it isn't too loud. But they were able to get some great shots of the movements of students between these stations. Again, there were nine rotating stations. Every kid didn't go to every single station. They got to go to an ecology, which is an environmental station, a living historian, and of course, weather permitting and buses arriving on time, they were all able to go on the water. So that was really great. Mm-hmm. And so the Bartram Frolic, we really appreciate every support that we've been able to get in this county. Sometimes it can be a struggle getting kids outside, especially on the water, but the school board has been on board the entire time. And so we really appreciate everything that you guys have done for us, and we hope to continue this in the future. We do see things that can be improved upon for next year as we learned some things from last year, such as the sheer heat needed water bottles. So we did provide every student with a full water bottle and a lot more partnership. So we're looking to expand it to include all of the elementary schools. We didn't have all of them participate this year, and so we're hoping that next year we get all 10 schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Hi, everyone. Elizabeth Van Rensburg. And I apologize, I did not bring my posse. I came by myself. I figured y'all probably didn't want 40, 45 Civil War reenactors with guns in the building. But anyway, hopefully I can encapsulate it myself. The occupation of Palaca, 1864, is actually in its eighth year. This year was the eighth annual. So we are very, very excited as we come up on a decade of giving back to the fourth graders here in Putnam County. What I like to reflect on most about where we're at at this stage is the fact that the fourth graders that initially came to our event are about to graduate. How exciting is that? So we definitely have had a footprint in the community for some time. As always, we do this on the last full weekend in September. This year, we did not have the amount of fourth graders that we normally have. Normally, we have up at around 800. We came in with our counts and a couple of schools that actually came to us from outside of Putnam County, which was sort of interesting, at around about 500 fourth graders. So we were still very excited about that. I kind of go random. I'm big on improv, so just go for it any time.
Hey, that was a picture of me shooting the cannon, by the way. I got a big kick out of that.
Shooting the cannon is a big carrot that we like to dangle in front of important people. Absolutely.
Now, if something came out of that cannon, I hope it didn't hit somebody in the river or something.
No, no, you were fine. And actually, our cannon is, thanks to Fort Clinch, coming down all the way from Fernandina Beach every year. They spend literally the entire weekend with us, and we are always so glad to have them because frankly, the thing to understand about the occupation of Palaca is that, as I said to Dr. Surensey, as you look around, there is not an opportunity to make $1 for the Putnam County Historical Society at this event. Quite intentionally so. We feel that this is a weekend, and specifically Friday is a day where we as Putnam County's Historical Society give back to our fourth graders. So we don't run the event on a shoestring. We spend what we need to do to make this a quality event. But please bear in mind that we don't make money doing this. We actually spend money doing this, and we're happy to do it. This year was exciting for us because typically, we have around 25 reenactors doing the Living History Weekend. This year, we were at 30 on Friday and topped out at 42 on Saturday. So this is an event that actually, amazingly, is putting heads in beds because while some of the reenactors camped, the majority of them did stay in hotels here in Putnam County. So anyway, we are very, very excited about next year. We too have some different things that we'd like to do in working with you and the schools. By the way, next year, September 27th is the Friday School Day, so please, please, please mark your calendars. And if I started thinking our reenactors and our volunteers at this point, y'all would all fall asleep. So I'm just going to give kind of a blanket thank you to everyone that was involved in the occupation of Palaca. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One of the things we're going to try to do to promote the occupation activity is that Aquila Elementary School students got cameras. They came off the bus and we gave them cameras, and they were documenting their interviews with the reenactors. And they are going to create their own little video that then we kind of use that as a trailer next year to gain more interest. The difference between the occupation of Palaca and the Bartram Frolic, the Bartram Frolic, the buses are all actually paid for through a grant through Georgia Pacific, through the City of Palaca. So students, that is absolutely 100% free. They get on a bus they did not have to pay for to come to an event they didn't have to pay for. For the occupation of Palaca, although the students do have to gather the money to get on the bus, the schools have to do that. So we're going to try to gain a little bit more interest next year by getting those students from Aquila to have some presentation that we put as part of our Canvas that we send out to schools so that that should also gain some more interest. And so I just want to say it's truly a community effort, and we thank everyone who was part of it these last weeks.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
And I wanted to mention that, you know, we have our differences and our arguments and fights and whatever. I love Putnam County because of its people, because of its community, and it takes a village to raise a child. We have a village here. Most places don't, but we do, and we're very fortunate. And I personally just want to say thank you to everyone that gets involved with our children. It's the future.
Yeah, when I was a little boy, Sam Carr hung out with Long Warrior a lot down around Stokes Landing. And they would try to call down lightning to bust a tree up and stuff, but I still remember, Sam. Thank you, guys. That was wonderful.
And it's great to just be able to inform our students of the richness of our own community and what we have here to offer. And some of these students would be able to tell people that they hear that may say something negative, hey, we have in Putnam County whatever it is that they were able to experience. And again, we do thank you for that because Kathy said it best, it takes the whole village. And we appreciate you again. And I think you deserve another hand, myself. Okay, I don't have any cards for public comments, so I am going to move along. We're to the, oh, yes, feel free to leave with our thanks again. Again, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything to pull?
I'm double-checking, and it is well, I'm good.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Okay, I'd like to pull E6.
E6.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, minus E6.
Second.
Some motion and a second on the floor. Any conversation? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign. I have no problem with this perfect order. I hold it to point out that this was like a perfect, you've got it together and the audit is clean. I don't know if I've ever seen a, seriously, a clean audit. So congratulations. That's a, that's a very big thing. Okay, I make a motion that we approve item E6.
I second it.
Oh, I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve item E6.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes 3-0. That brings us out of regular session and into emergency session. We have one item that I put up there. We have a school affiliation agreement. I don't see the, here it is. North Florida Putnam Community Medical Center Clinical Training Agreement. It's us with North Florida Putnam Community Medical Center Clinical Training Agreement where they take our-
High school students.
Our host a program, yeah.
Yes.
So it came in late, didn't make the agenda on time, but it is time-sensitive, so it's an emergency item.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the North Florida Putnam Community Medical Center Clinical Training Agreement. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 3-0. We're out of emergency session and back into regular session. And we're at discussion, unfinished business. Do I have a motion to remove from the table the appointment of a board member to serve as the representative on the St. John River State College Board?
Motion approved to remove from the table appointment of-
I want a motion to remove that from the table.
Yes, and I'm reading it as it is. I'm making the motion but reading it as it's safe. Yes, so I'm motioning to remove from the table, Madam Chair, to remove from the table the appointment of a board member to serve as a representative on the St. John's River State College Board.
I second that.
Okay, it's the Adult Ed Board, I think.
It says Adult Ed, remove it from the table.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't have Adult Ed written on mine.
Well, we'll talk about it once it's on. Did you second that, David?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a secondary rule from the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 3-0. Okay, now we can talk about it. If this is the one I asked about, Sharon, it is.
It is.
This is Adult Ed. When we transferred Adult Ed from here to there, there was a committee, 20, 30, 40, sometimes people show up. And I have been the board member that goes to maybe four times a year, there's a formative meeting of what they're doing for our dropouts, basically, our kids who don't make it through. They have a lot of things they offer. So we need somebody who is willing to do that. It's not a big, I can tell you, it's not a big commitment. It's four meetings a year, and everybody's very nice, and there's no work for the meeting. You kind of show up to represent the school system, and sometimes you can answer questions for them or get information later. But I really haven't had to, maybe I'd give them a name and a number of who to call to find out what they want. Yes, I mean, it's really not a lot of work.
Madam Chair, if I could say Renee Huff is our contact.
Yes.
If you ever have any questions, she could give you some technical information, whoever.
And I also serve on the board.
And how soon do they need this information? I mean, the person's name.
I was just going to say, you know, this can wait-
Wait until November.
Until we have a five-member board.
Right.
And a new, brand-new member could get this because there's nothing to it. You've had a couple of years, Sandy. Seriously, because we're going to have to place me on the expulsion committee also. I'm the board representative on the expulsion committee, and almost every time we have a meeting, that morning, there have been expulsions. So somebody's going to need to replace me on that, or the board can decide that the whole board does it?
And we alternate.
Or you alternate.
Okay.
That'll happen at the-
I am in favor of waiting, simply because-
Reorganization.
I have inherited probably about three positions since. So I'd like to share the wealth. You know, I want to spread it around.
And this is one that a brand-new board member would be able to handle.
Yes, so if we can table this-
No, I just think that we should agree to-
Just put it on then.
Put it on the reorganizational calendar, agenda. Have it put on the reorganizational agenda. We can just do that. If we don't make a motion, it isn't best, and then you can figure it out.
Otherwise, you're taking it.
When you've got five of them up here.
Otherwise, you're going to take it.
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just put it on the agenda.
Just off the table.
Drop and, okay, all righty. We're done with it, and it'll just go on the agenda for the reorganization.
Okay.
Now, I need a motion to remove from the table discussion input and action letter of support for Edge USDA loan.
I'll make a motion that we remove for input and action for discussion to let our support for the Edge USDA loan.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 3-0. Discussion.
Madam Chair, if I can just remind you, last meeting, you'd asked the board attorney to draft a letter or draft a summary of the letter for you to approve, and I believe he's given you a copy of that, and he can answer any questions about that on his own. But we did supply him technical data, if you will, that you have in front of you. So we're here to answer any questions, and I know Charlie's here. It was easy to want to actually put it together for you.
The district directors were very helpful in trying to put together a summary-
Right.
-of deliverables that they were expecting from Edge. And we, I received this information yesterday and forwarded that on to you today. And one of your- yesterday and forwarded that on to you today, and wanted your guidance as to how you would like the letter to read.
Charlie, I, from my perspective, just a letter to comply with the USDA loan is to just tell them that we're, you know, on behalf of, of the Edge School, we're writing a letter of support. The district school board is offering a letter of support with the following information, and then you give exactly what they've asked for, you know. They have the fifteen-year charter, they have the, they, they have a, they're a C school, they've improved academically, and then on these others that, you know, they had a clean audit, and if that's one of the questions. But, you know, and then you, I guess you could say, and they attach to some of the problems that we've, you know, we've, we're, we are addressing and trying to work on, and however you want to word it, but you.
I mean, to me, I, I understand they gave those four things to help us decide, okay? I was involved when the law passed back in the nineties, and then when two of the charter schools were formed. To me, this, are they in good standing or are they not? To me, that's what we have to say. I mean, it's almost like a yes, no, four-sentence letter. Am I wrong? Do we have to go into a big report?
I, I don't think USDA has mandated one way or the other, just for the, the safety of the board's perspective. I think we, remember Buckles, we're in it last time, to give a complete.
I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be open and honest, because then if something doesn't go right, then we're going to be held, you know, in problems like, like the, I'm under the impression that we don't have armed security there yet, but I mean, they could hire somebody for the compliance with this.
What has that got to do with getting a loan?
Nothing.
I'd like to.
Their finance.
I would suggest, I would suggest that the information that you have given, addressing what is, you know, what we found to be right on target, the grade of a C, the fifteen-year charter, et cetera, and to state something to this effect. And these are the areas that we have addressed, that they have begun working on, because I'm sure they have this list, and, you know, if we want to go in that direction.
Well, if we applied for a, a similar thing, someone could write a letter pointing out the good things about the school district and the things that aren't as good. I mean, so it's not uncommon, but I just.
I'd like to have the floor for a minute. They're applying for a loan. We're writing a letter to say they're in good standing with us. What has the fact that they don't have armed security got to do with the loan? The clean audit is what's to be, got the hundred percent clean audit has a lot to do with the loan and whether or not we are, so to speak, recommending them for this loan. These other things have nothing to do with borrowing money.
I think you're right. In that respect, I just would have to defer to the board attorney to, you know, the seventy, twenty is, is, is obviously, there's going to have to be, we can't be the only situation in the state of Florida that's having a problem complying with that right now, so, but that's, that has nothing here and there to do with applying for a loan, but whatever the board attorney thinks, we need to say is, I don't think will keep them from getting a loan, because we are working together to try to remedy the problems that we have encountered, and they are too, so I don't think he'll stop them. I mean, but I, I'll defer that to Charlie. I don't, you know, put it in there, don't put it in there, but I'll take your legal advice as the board attorney on what we, you think we should do. Really, I'd take it either way. Now, how's that for putting it on you? Felt good, didn't it? I, I really don't, I, I, you know, we've got some problems we've encountered, you know, we talked about it at a prior meeting and, and went over it. We've talked about sending the good with the bad and, and, you know, to make sure that you didn't, you're not accused of falsifying any data or any information.
Withholding.
Withholding back facts that are relevant to, to maybe the government-backed loan, so I just think it's up to the attorney to advise us on what we need to do.
Of what we need to, no, the board decides.
The board decides.
Attorney can advise, but he doesn't recommend what we're supposed to do.
That is correct.
Right.
He gives us legal advice, and legally, do we have to report on all their shortcomings like this?
I don't believe that USDA has told us with exact specificity what they want in the letter or do not want. They have asked for, is the, is the charter school in good standing, and the way that they look at good standing includes, but is not limited to, those four areas, which there, we discussed those. But I think maybe some of the concern was from the, the district directors that there are certain elements that might not be specifically met in the charter, in addition to the, the security issue, you know, the.
Well, seriously, seriously, I don't remember how long ago you have your charter, five years? Five years now? Um, this should be done all the time. This shouldn't be the first time we've stepped in as a board and said, what, let me see what's wrong. Okay, now we're going to help you fix. We never did that.
Never, I've never.
And it's really sad to me that this brings about what we should be doing anyway with all, all three of our charters. We are legally obliged to make sure, now, now you know, because we've looked into it for this case, but we're legally obliged to, to watch all three of them, actually, and, and see if they're doing things the way they're supposed to. And in the meantime, we're supposed to be doing things the way we're supposed to. It would be real cute to take this thing and go into one of our schools. I'm sure we wouldn't have a hundred percent compliance.
That's what I'm saying, you can find good and bad anywhere you go.
And to me, if, if it's a loan and they've just gotten a perfect financial report, no anything, that's, to me, they're in good standing. You know, and their balance sheet and their records that I looked at today, everything's okay with that. They're in good standing with us, they're working with us to do what we're, they're supposed to do, they're in good standing. I mean, in my opinion, they're in good standing, and I don't know why we need a laundry list of things that have nothing to do with getting a loan, like.
So one of the examples was from Rhonda about carrying a negative fund balance in any governmental fund.
Right.
That's a requirement of the charter. I, I agree with you that the, the audit is relevant. If, if the board were to want to include the items of concern that the, the district and the charter school are working on together to remedy, also include the favorable audit.
Any, any of the, any of the, any of the following concerns, you know, that, that we've given, the board is working together with the school to remedy these, and here is the proof with the audit, as long as we're upfront and, Kathy, Kathy's got a good point, because normally you wouldn't go into all that detail, but.
I think we've made it more complicated than it has to be. That's just.
Well, your opinion.
My opinion and majority rules, and I don't have that letter in front of me from the USDA, but if they want to know, are they in good standing with us? Right now, they are, and as far as them applying for a loan, here's their perfect, which, again, I've never seen a perfect one, here's their perfect audit.
Let me, let me, let me try to, can I entertain it? Can I try to make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we say that we, we have you compose a letter that.
You.
To, to Mr. Douglas.
Okay.
Compose a letter based on the information we've discussed and how we feel like we are in good standing at this time, based on the results of this audit, based on several other factors, as the fifteen years and the, in the charter and the C grade, and any of the other problems that we have attached, we are working together to resolve in an expedient fashion.
We amicably worked.
Yeah, amicably.
Because that's where we're finally at.
As long as you're upfront with, I don't think you'll have any problem or repercussions.
And, and before I second it, once the letter is written, I'd like for us to have an opportunity to look at it and then the chair and sign it, and we can get it going, if that's possible, if that's doable.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I second the motion that David made.
Okay, and then we'll do it by email. Am I understanding that right? You'll draft something by email, and once we all say okay, then we'll send it.
We, that really should be done at a board meeting.
Board meeting.
Well, that, this is the board meeting we're trying to do it at.
But that would be a, that would be a son of a gun.
Okay, so then, then, then that wouldn't, that wouldn't work for.
No, we'd have to have a special meeting.
Special meeting.
And that's got a big deal. I mean, I call you two and I say, when's good, and we come in.
To expedite it.
Yes, because we need to get it.
Once we have it the way we want it, then we'll find out what's good for all three of us, and we'll come in and, and get it out. That sounds good.
At the special.
All that, Sharon?
Sharon has it.
Good, good, good.
Would you call for a vote? Or do we not?
She didn't.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor.
And, and a second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes three two zero. Now, we have new business, input and action on the 2018-19 Florida Safe School Assessment Report, the SAT, and District Best Practices Assessment. Apaga.
And, uh.
Very good.
Mr. Weaver's here to answer questions about it.
Right, this thing, I printed out and read every word.
Well.
And it, it's something else.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I do have a question, which is irrelevant to approving it, but I noticed the yes, yes, yes. Can I assume that when you did not answer, you meant no? Because there were some that you just didn't answer.
You will have to point those out. I know there were some that we marked in progress.
Yes, I saw that.
Or not applicable.
But there are quite a few that.
Right.
Don't have anything.
See, Ma'am didn't come.
Yeah. You would have to give them an exact one. They should have all been marked yes, no, or not applicable.
All right.
You want to take a second look at it?
No, I'll do it. I didn't mark them, and I'm sorry. I did mark.
But if they're not marked yes or not yes, would that be correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so that would be, they would be no. And if they were, if they were incorrect, they would probably be marked incorrect.
Yeah.
And we saw one no.
Honestly, that, I would, you would have to find a specific one, because they all should be marked yes, no, or not applicable.
I'll check it, and I'll get back to you this evening or tomorrow morning.
Okay.
On page eight, three point two D. The district holds staff at all levels accountable for complying with the safety and security program to include consequences for non-compliance while providing them with multiple opportunities for practice and support. I think we're, I mean, I don't know why we put no, because I think, aren't these all things we're supposed to do?
The reason that was put no, and this is a purpose for y'all reviewing it, because we can make any changes to this, but we do have a mechanism for recording compliance with like our safety drills and completing our safety plans. The no was in reference to, and I actually asked some questions about this, if we had any detailed evidence of non, of consequences for non-compliance with our schools. You know, for example, are we holding safe money schools or safe monies back from individual schools, those type things?
Right.
But as a whole, when you look at that section, as you can see, there's one, two, three, four different parts.
Mm-hmm.
Overall, we marked, yes, we were in compliance with that section as a whole.
That's the only no in the whole report, I think.
Because they, you know, a lot, some of it, in the instructions for the documents, it really is a judgment call, because you may be in compliance with a majority of it and one little aspect not, but as a whole, you would be in compliance.
Okay, and you had your suggestions, your recommendations to the board.
Yes, and I can.
I would like to bring that up.
Okay.
This is on page two and three.
Okay.
Actually, page three, I think.
Would you like me just to kind of go through them, or is there one in particular you?
Um, what's your pleasure, board?
Go through, okay. So let me start with just a little background information. Florida statute directs each school district to complete this assessment. It allows districts to review district programs related to violence prevention, physical security, fire safety, regulations associated with safety or risk management, and in many other programs and security departments and curricula. Based on these findings, the district school superintendent, via the school safety specialist, shall provide recommendations to the district school board. Annually, each district school board must receive these findings at a publicly noticed board meeting to provide the public an opportunity to hear the district school board members discuss and take action on this report. Overall, our assessment team, which there are members listed in the, in the summary, found that all of our district, our current district plans, policies, procedures, and actions meet the majority of the best practices outlined in the assessment tool. However, there were seven, based on, on all this information gathered together, there were seven recommendations that we made for the board to consider. And what I'll do is I'll go through, I'll go through the seven recommendations, and then there's a short piece, a short piece that addresses timelines, fiscal impact, and the departments responsible.
Right.
Okay. So first, first recommendation is to, that the Department of School Safety would coordinate with all local first responders, provide opportunities for them to conduct tours of our educational facilities. Two, develop a district media response plan for dealing with high-profile events within the district, and that would be done through the Department of Media and our, our Public Information Officer. Now, I want to address that. Our emergency operations plan addresses media-related incidents in an emergency event. We just felt like we needed something much more detailed and comprehensive.
You, you have a death during a school day or at a, at a field trip or something, you have to have somebody speaking and knows what's going on.
Sharing these with us. Is, all of these reports, in the past, you had to fill out the form where you evacuated the bus, where you did your mop lockdowns, et cetera? Each school had to send in that information. Is that how you got some of, of what you're sharing with us here?
Um, I mean, that would be a small part of one of these sections, right? But we do make them document all of their drills, yes, ma'am. The third one was adopt the Stop the Bleed Campaign, and I'll get into a little bit more of that here in just a second. That would be through the Department of School Safety. Once launched, adopt by resolution of the board, the Fortify Florida App, which is a new app coming out that allows anonymous reporting of suspicious threats. Consider adding signage to advertise the Guardian Program at each of our schools, with the maintenance department helping with that. I gave an example, and again, this is totally open for the board, but something to affect attention. Please be aware, staff at Putnam County Schools may be armed and may use force to protect our students. Next, update our policy so that at least one of. Next, update our policy so that at least one of our required lockdown drills be conducted at a common gathering time. And last, use funding from our target hardening grant to update improved territorial reinforcement and our single-point accesses to our schools. And then any remaining funds used to upgrade and update our public address and fire alarm systems within our schools, to be headed up by our maintenance department. So that's the seven, that's the seven bullet points. As far as like the, the fiscal impact and timelines, they're listed in your packet, but like the tour of the facility, there really would be minimum, if any fiscal impact beyond the use of existing personnel resources. Our goal for completion on that would be by the end of this school year, because we would look to pull in multiple agents, all first responders, not just law enforcement, the fire and EMS, emergency management, the whole nine yards.
What's the Stop the Bleed thing?
Stop the Bleed. Um, it is not mandatory, it's just a recommendation, but.
What is the program?
This is a program that the Health Department reached out to me. I've got some handouts for you. Again, it's little if no cost. They are providing, willing to provide 131 Stop the Bleed tourniquet kits, basically, for our schools and the training.
And what age level gets this?
This would be training for staff.
Oh, Stop the Bleed is staff.
Tourniquet. My heart's out.
In case a kid, a child is cut.
No problem.
And that's just a, this is.
Kids. Yeah, okay, no problem. I do want to talk about the signs.
Okay.
Number five. If, I don't know if the superintendent remembers, but when, the first time he called about talking to the sheriff about this possibility, I told him in my first life with my first husband, when he got sick, he and I owned the largest guard dog rental agency on Long Island, and that's a fact. We had 56 working dogs, and people who couldn't afford to pay the rent would buy the sign, because once they put the sign out, caution, these premises protected by guard dogs, nobody broke in anyone. They were afraid, they went somewhere else. The sign alone was a good deterrent. And I preferred bluffing with signs and not putting guns in schools. That was my idea, just say they're armed. And we got an employee, you know, one employee in some of our, I'd like to reword it, I do believe that we should have the signs up. I mean, how can it be a deterrent if nobody knows? So I do believe with all my heart, we should have signs up, saying, I just changed the wording a little, but majority rules.
Yeah, that was just put in there for, to discuss, absolutely.
Attention, please be aware, or I wouldn't put please, attention, be aware, some staff, oh, seriously. Attention, be aware that some staff at Putnam County Schools are armed and will use force. I don't know why we got to say may. They're trained to use force. We expect all our armed deputies and guardians to use force. So, I don't see why we should pussyfoot around with may, that's illegal, shall and may and all this. They will, they plan to. They are armed and will use force. That would just be my preference.
Okay. Ms. Darla, did you get that for me? Thank you.
Just, just get with Mr. Douglas and make sure we're, whatever you do is, makes a letter of the law, and we're good to go.
Um, I thought that we still had to leave up the no gun zone signs.
Yeah, and I think that the federal law, the gun-free school zone, and Mr. Douglas may, he may be, my answer is, I believe, just like law enforcement officers are exceptions to that law, I believe the guardians would also be exempt, except, you know, be an exception under that.
But do we have to leave the federal signs up?
I would think so, because that would notice anyone else that if you're, if you have just a plain concealed carry, you may not, you're not to bring a weapon onto school.
Oh, I'm all in favor of signs like this, big ones, banners. I mean, I'm serious. You want it to be a deterrent? Well, then tell people they're there. It's not a deterrent if it's all this big secret, and, oh, the more we put it plac high, the bigger the deterrent. Not if nobody knows there's guns there. So, this is the deterrent, the sign, and I don't know how much money we have put aside for it, but.
Well, I estimated the cost at approximately $4,000, and the reason being it's so little, it's really just the materials. My department and John Chastain, we went in together last year, the year before, and purchased a sign-making machine.
Oh, very good.
So we can make our own signs. So it's just the cost of the materials to actually develop the signs, and then our personnel to put them up.
Wonderful.
So that's why we have it at only about $4,000. What I just sent down also was, this is just a sample again, the app has not launched yet, but the Fortify Florida App, we currently use the Crime Stoppers as our anonymous reporting, and they have the P3 app associated with it. By all means, I think we still advertise it and use that. It's just, my recommendation would be to also adopt Fortify Florida, because it's specifically designed for schools, and they also will notice school-based administrators as well as law enforcement. So, when that launches, you'll probably hear more about it. I can bring that back before, if this is, that was just something I put in there just as an example of what we may be looking at in the future. Here's a sample of a lockdown policy. This is very simple. On the back, you'll see in red, again, very limited, if, if not any cost to that beyond cost associated with our personnel, as far as just adopting and advertising that policy. On the back page, you'll see where we added to the policy, requiring them to do one during a common gathering time.
Hand on the neck, this has been.
And then the last, the last major one would be the target hardening. You know, we got approximately 363,000. Mr. Chastain and myself, his department, we've been looking at all of our different facilities, laying out those funnels that create the single point of access. We're also looking at some of the buzz-in systems for the front doors with the video or voice, depending on the layout of that particular school. We estimated that, and this is just an estimate, because we're still working through processes, about 280,000 for, to bring all of our schools up to the same equal point as far as the single point of access. So we're thinking that will leave us approximately 83,000 that we're recommending be used to upgrade some of our public address systems, particularly. We still have some schools that have the one single point in the front office where you have to go make an announcement. And if any of you have seen the video we did from our active shooter event a few years ago, they came into the front office, and if they had had that system, they wouldn't have been able to make the announcement. We're looking at upgrading, and, and I don't know how much that 83 will get us in that, but we at least want to start with that, upgrading some of those PA systems, so a teacher in a classroom or an assistant principal in the library can pick up that phone and make an emergency announcement. And then if there is any, any money beyond that, we would like to look at our fire alarm panels as well, as far as being able to program secondary verifications. It's our understanding that fire code allows us to have a 15-second delay, so the panel say in the front office goes off, you have 15 seconds to acknowledge it. From that point where you acknowledge it, you could have up to three minutes to go verify, to do a secondary verification of where that panel's telling you the trouble is before the alarm goes off. So you would have, able, be able to cancel it and to make, make an announcement. So that's what we would recommend. Any remaining monies to be used for would be PA and fire panels.
I have complete confidence in you and the people you.
Thank you.
Made these decisions with. So do we need to have a motion to approve this?
What they're looking for is, um.
Yes.
I need, yes, I need, I just, I have to provide them what the school board actions were on the assessment.
I make a motion that we, if, if it's all right, Madam Chairman.
Please.
That we accept the school safety proposal that's before us at this time.
With the one recommendation.
With the recommendation.
Of the change, the one change.
The one change on the signage.
I second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Did you get that, Sharon? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes three, zero.
Thank you.
Um, we are on two reports. Do we need to do anything with this resolution about Fortify Florida?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I've asked if we could wait till the next board meeting, if we could attach it to the agenda.
We need an agenda size so people know. Yeah, just put it on the agenda for next time. Great. Okay, so, board member reports. Ms. Gilliard.
Um, the only thing I'm, I'm just gonna mention is what they're doing there at Browning Pierce Elementary School, the hardening and all of those things, the fence, the end, they, they have the gates now, another entry for the staff that comes in to block them off from the substation and everything, and so that's pretty much what I've seen, and, and I like that. I do know at Jenkins, you press the button, and then it says, tells you on the side, look up at the camera, so they could see you, and that's great, and they buzz you in. So, the school safety thing, to me, they're only moving in the right direction.
Mr. Buckles.
Oh, as you know, I've been requesting a workshop on certain facets of discipline for quite a while, but now that we're apparently are going to have a new board, I think it would be more appropriate to wait until the new board is seated before we do this. Many of my concerns are related to how we handle students who inappropriately touch and contact other students, and what kind of actions we're following up on and taking at the school, and a variety of other things that are related, particularly if kids are in a, you know, two or three children jump on a child and they defend themselves, and, you know, we just, there's, there's some loose ends that I think we need to look at tightening down on, and, you know, from some of the things we tolerate in language and how young people respond to adults, and maybe take a stronger role in that, and I just, I'll get with Travis and.
Well, Mr. Buckles, why don't you request that the second meeting in January, say? Because the meetings aren't even scheduled yet, but, you know, before the first meeting in January, the second meeting, that, that gets plugged in for you, so everybody knows when.
I will, but I think it would at least be January, but I don't want to do that until I sit down with Travis and the superintendent and speak, okay?
Sure.
All right. That's me, that's, I'm done.
Okay, I really don't, I don't have anything. It was nice to see all the people here and all the wonderful things, how many members of our community chip in, and I have nothing else. Mr. Attorney.
The truancy program continues to do very well. Last week, at the truancy hearing, the vast majority of families were progressing along well with the parenting plans, students were re-engaging in attending school, and most of them were on their way of graduating out of the truancy program.
Wonderful.
In a positive direction.
Very good.
So Christie May, Danny Hood, Travis Weaver, all who are responsible for making the truancy program a success, it is operating well.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, I just want to remind the board, we do have a workshop planned for the next, right before the next board meeting, October 16th, if you'll make a note of that, at 2:00 PM, is that correct? And that, the purpose of that workshop is to discuss insurance, health insurance, and our insurance committee has been meeting and will be bringing a recommendation to that board meeting, that will be an agenda item on the October 16th. So a lot of information will be shared at that workshop, if you can make a note to be there. And the only other thing I want to mention is, we, this past week, we had Dad's Day, and that, dads include granddads and other significant male role models, and I was able to participate that, in that event at one of our schools where some of my grandkids go, so it's great to see a lot of dads and people out there eating donuts and meeting their teachers and, you know, just showing interest in their kids. So, thanks to all the dads who were able to come out for Dad's Day, and that's all I have.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.